Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history... meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glanville.
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn.
Here.
Mayor Montgomery.
Here.
Councilmember Burgess.
Here.
Councilmember Wolf.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Wolf, would you lead us?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, are there any items that need to be added, deleted, or changed on the agenda?
Yes, I'd like to request to remove the consideration of award contract to the lowest responsive responsible bidder for the basketball court at Jamestown Park from the agenda. And to add budget amendment number 18 is the last item on the consent agenda.
I make a second to the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks. And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with that change?
I move to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Kay, did we have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Yes, John Capes.
As a reminder, please state your name, your address, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
And only three minutes. How you doing, folks? John Capes, 704 Neil Drive, Jamestown. Hang on a second. I don't have to read this thing, but I'd like to get my time right. Okay. Couple of things came to mind. I've been over and again going through the news and keeping up with what's been going on with Jamestown Water and what's been happening and what's been said time and time again. It occurred to me that if you were a stockholder in a company and you owned 8% of that company, you would be considered a minor or, you know, you'd be in the minority as far as being able to make decisions, being able to make any calls about what's being done and so forth. You would still go to meetings and you would still share your concerns and you would do whatever was necessary to try to at least convey your concerns. But just like that, Jamestown owns 8% of High Points Water. And yet Jamestown keeps getting beat up on by the same cadre people over and over again for no particularly good reason other than I think that it amuses them to do so about the fact that we somehow are in control of everything that's going on with High Points Water that comes through Jamestown, which we own 8% of. I find this to be disingenuous. I also find that it is ridiculous, really. It is unreasonable to expect that if you keep pounding on the same people here that somehow the response that you need is supposed to be elsewhere. It's supposed to be dealing with High Point. It's supposed to be dealing with the state government. It's supposed to be dealing at a federal level. And so I've had many people come to me and ask me how I feel about it. And I've said the same thing time and again. The concerns have been voiced many times over. There's only so much we can control in Jamestown, North Carolina, population less than 4,000 people, give or take. Might have changed. But it drives me nuts to hear this because it's disingenuous. It's very disingenuous because the people that are doing it are the same people that were, you know, trying to beat up on the town and its staff about what's happening with this piece of property or what's happening with this particular piece of zoning or what's happening with this pod. It's the same people over and over and over again. I made a point not too long ago in an editorial that the people that are involved were also the same people who tried to prop up somebody to run for council. And that person currently is under 20 charges of misconduct with a minor. And my point to that is if they can't get that right, how good are their facts and their vetting on everything else that they're doing? And what is their real intention for Jamestown? My personal feeling is that they just want to keep having their moment and they feel like they can gain something by beating up on this council or the staff or the people that are working here every day. They don't volunteer. They don't offer any alternatives. They just complain. And I'm really tired of it. And I just needed to say that. With 10 seconds left, I'd also like to say happy birthday to Paul Blanchard.
Yes, yes.
Happy birthday, Paul. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Is anyone else signed up, Kay?
Nobody else signed up.
Thank you. Anna, would you come forward and discuss the annexation request?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
No, ma'am?
No.
There'll be a second public comment period at the end of the meeting.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. First on the agenda is a public hearing for the annexation of 1905, 1915, and 1903 Guilford College Road. Under General Statute 160A-31, the town has received a petition for annexation for the properties located in 1905, 1915, and 1903 Guilford College Road. As the first step, the town council directed the clerk to investigate the petition by adopting a resolution instructing her to do such. The clerk and town attorney have investigated the petition and have found it be sufficient and a public hearing on the matter is scheduled. That date is for tonight, June 25th, regular 6:00 p.m. meeting. The hearing for the annexation and rezoning are both tonight, for 1903, 1905, 1915 Guilford College Road. I want to be very clear that the annexation and rezoning are contingent on one another. We always will do an annexation first before rezoning because we don't want it to be rezoned and then someone say, oh, we don't want to annex it and then not have it in town limits. So the annexation will be first. But because they are contingent on each other and one very much has to do with the other and you need to hear the facts for both, I'm going to present on the property and the rezoning request during this annexation, the first hearing. So, off we go. We're looking at the Equestrian Center, as most people will call it. It is, as I mentioned, two parcels, 1903 Guilford College Road and 1905, 1915 Guilford College Road. Those are in that red square on the screen. It's approximately 18.704 acres. That's per a survey. And you'll see north of it is Chadwick Drive, south is Hickory Hollow. And then I also have some neighborhoods listed here. Jordan Creek is below Hickory Hollow. Bordeaux, which is in Greensboro, limits to the east. And then Pulte Town Homes will be directly at the end of this property in the red. Heritage Hill Drive, Bentley Park, Wellington, Jamestown Presbyterian, and Duchess Court are all in close vicinity. So, the current use is an equestrian center. Provides boarding, lessons, and training. It's bordered on the north, as you saw on that map, by single family. It's bordered on the south by single family. On the east, it is residential multifamily. This is in Greensboro and there are some additions to that and they are listed in your packet specifically what they are. And to the west, it is also single-family residential. The open space and tree conservation areas that are required are 1.87 acres for open space and 1.12 acres for tree conservation area. Those can be overlapped in the same area. The streets that it exits onto, and I'll show you an overview map in a little bit, is Chadwick Drive. This also meets up with Guilford College Road and across from the cul-de-sac there off of Chadwick. The water is not currently available on the site, but there are two available options that staff see fit. And there is sewer accessible from an easement on the southwest corner of the site. This is in the Randallman Lake general watershed and is subject to those watershed rules. So, the request. It is for single-family residential to going to conditional zoning multifamily residential. So the definition of multifamily residential is, "The multifamily residential district ensures the conformity of existing multifamily residential neighborhoods and provides for the development of new multifamily residential neighborhoods in a pattern that encourages the wise use of land. Allowed building lot types in the multifamily district are attached house and multifamily. Neighborhoods in this district consist primarily of currently existing multifamily developments. Standards for the multifamily residential district ensure that new development maintains the character of the community. The multifamily residential district permits the completion and conformity of existing multifamily residential subdivisions already existing or approved in preliminary plat or sketch plan form by the Town of Jamestown prior to the effective date of these regulations." For new subdivisions or multifamily developments, the town encourages the clustering of development and protection of open space through the use of cluster development overlay district. So, with that rezoning, because it is conditional zoning, which means instead of just the straight definition, they have some conditions added on. These have changed since planning board, so I want to go through them. And then at the end, I will go over staff's kind of thoughts and concerns about some of them. Conditions. One, with cooperation and permission from the property owner at 6308 Hickory Hollow Road, the developer shall perform a bathometric study of the water feature at said property. Maximum number of units, 99. Building heights, two-story maximum. Use, multifamily residential townhome, no apartments. Five, all installations shall be in conformance with NCDOT transportation regulations for traffic access and roadway improvements. No traffic impact study shall be required. A five-foot sidewalk with a two-foot grass strip shall be provided along Guilford College Road. Seven, in an effort to preserve the appearance of Chadwick Drive, no sidewalk or curb and gutter shall be installed along Chadwick Drive. Eight, all interior streets shall be provided in conformance with Town of Jamestown standards with a minimum center line radius of 125 feet allowed up offset bulbs. Nine, a berm, minimum four foot in height and 30 foot wide, with a greater than type C Town of Jamestown landscape buffer shall be installed along Guilford College Road. And 10, the Town of Jamestown shall permit alternatives for public water service to this site that include extension of facilities owned by either the Town of Jamestown from the existing water line located at Mackey Road, the City of High Point from the existing water line located in Guilford College Road, or the City of Greensboro. Due to the many unknown variables and regulations associated with the use of those public facilities, the source of water to the site shall be determined by the property owner developer based upon future feasibility analysis conforming with the North Carolina Public Water Supplies requirements and standards." It's a mouthful. So, this was submitted to us just last week. So many of you have gotten a chance to ask questions to me about it, respond to many of emails, but this plan kind of goes back to the first that was shown at planning board, but the conditions are different. There are two entrances off of Chadwick Drive. The applicant also provided information from NCDOT and the fire marshal saying that this is an acceptable use and it is a preferred entrance instead of a single one off of Guilford College Drive. So, that's it. It's still 99 townhomes. And then the conditions are what has really changed. I know you've all watched the planning board meeting, so I won't go into super depth about that, but it is two entrances off of Chadwick. It is 99 townhomes with sidewalk only on one side. And that's a quick overview. The future land use. So, we make all of our decisions with a basis on the comprehensive plan, which was recently updated, the envisioned Jamestown Comprehensive Plan. In the comprehensive plan, this area is described as future land use. That's a kind of butter yellow color that is most of Jamestown. So suburban residential. The suburban residential land use classification is the most prevalent of the future land use classifications applied on the future land use map, encompassing the majority of the planned residential neighborhoods in the community outside of the town's traditional core area. Although primarily developed in larger single-family residential subdivisions, this land use classification is also intended to accommodate lower intensity attached residential development in the same context, along with low intensity civic uses such as churches. Where undeveloped land is included in this classification, it is intended to be developed in a manner similar to adjacent suburban residential development. Jamestown has several guiding principles and I've pulled out four that this does meet. There are also others that it doesn't meet, but no plan will ever meet all of them. It would be impossible, actually. So, these are the four that I've pulled out that I do believe it meets. Jamestown will actively facilitate high-quality growth that is both compatible with the town's traditional development pattern and innovative in how it meets the needs of our diverse and dynamic community. Principle two, as the strength of our community is directly tied to the long-term success of our neighborhoods, we will work diligently to promote and maintain the quality of life and aesthetic standards that our residents expect in Jamestown. Principle four, the ability to safely walk and ride a bicycle throughout the town is critical to maintaining our community's high quality of life. We will ensure that our community is well-connected with the necessary infrastructure to support walking and biking as an important mode of transportation for all residents. And guiding principle 10, Jamestown is a welcoming and inclusive community that values the benefits of diversity in all aspects of the town and its residents. The TRC met on June 21st to review the submitted site plan and conditions. So, I'll note that included in this was an illustrative site plan. That means that site plan you saw, no matter how you vote tonight, if you were to vote to approve, it could still change some. It is not a final site plan. It has not been approved by TRC yet. It has not been approved for all the watershed and engineering and things that need to go through. This is an illustrative and it is subject to change in minor ways. They also submitted documentation from NCDOT and the fire marshal stating preference and that they are comfortable with the two entrances on Chadwick. They also presented an example product illustration that was submitted that is in your packet. There are some conditions that the TRC would like to note. The bathometric study was added to conditions. This was in the neighborhood meeting, promised to a neighbor that this would be done to protect their pond. We thought it was pertinent to be included as a condition to make sure that is held up. This is to just ensure the quality of their pond on their property. The density currently is still at 99 units or 5.3 units per acre. This is a concern to staff based on the future land use that says, "Lower intensity attached residential development and that where undeveloped land is included in this classification is intended to be developed in a manner similar to adjacent suburban residential development." So, lower intensity. Staff is not sure 99 units is a lower intensity. There are townhomes adjacent with Pulte. Those are in Greensboro, but they are adjacent and Jordan Creek is certainly nearby. So, it's not an issue with townhomes from staff's perspective. It is a concern about density. It has been changed from the last plan from five-foot sidewalks, from eight-foot multi-use path to five-foot sidewalks. The Jamestown Comprehensive Bicycle and pedestrian Plan calls for this area to have a multi-use path. That minimum is eight foot. It's recommended 10 foot, but as this currently would not connect to anywhere, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. Staff would be okay with eight foot. Now, you may think, we don't want a sidewalk to nowhere, but we have to think in the future as things develop, as roadway widens, we want the ability to have NCDOT to install a sidewalk and have those connections eventually. So this is looking forward. Berm specifications were included. These were recommended at the planning board level and these match what we have required along Mackey Road for new development. The current number 10 condition about water services, it still needs to be changed and discussed further with public services staff. They are not content with the current wording and location of where it would come from. Finally, Planning Board. Planning Board met on March 11th and continued the hearing to April 8th. At the April 8th meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend denial of the proposed rezoning. And they adopted the following consistency statement. I'm just going to read these highlighted sections in red because that gets to the meat of it. "The Planning Board finds that the proposed zoning amendment is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan because the suburban residential future land use calls for lower intensity uses to be developed in a manner similar to or adjacent to similar development and neither of these are met by the proposal." In the "not reasonable" section, "The Planning Board further finds that the proposed zoning amendment is unreasonable because there is a disregard for guiding principles that encourage design standards that enhance the quality of life and the development, are compatible with surroundings, and avoid the introduction of monotonous development styles." Finally, "The zoning amendment is not in the public interest. Planning Board further finds the proposed zoning amendment to be against the public interest because it deviates from our adopted comprehensive plan in a way that is unreasonable to approve as a conditional use." So, the next steps. There is an applicant here to speak and present. And after that, the public hearing for annexation will be opened. The public hearing and rezoning, as I mentioned at the beginning, are contingent on each other. However, they are two separate public hearings. But because they're really hinged on each other, the hearing for annexation is going to be opened and at that time, the public will be invited to speak. The public should also speak on the rezoning request at this time as well. That's why I've gone ahead and presented this. After the hearing, the council will vote to continue, approve, or deny the annexation request. After the annexation hearing, the rezoning hearing will be open procedurally. At this time, I believe the mayor will ask only new speakers with new information that has not been presented to speak. Ideally, the annexation vote and rezoning vote will be the same vote. So, with that, unless you have questions for me before the applicant?
Any questions for?
Have the applicant.
Yes. Would the applicant like to speak?
Hello, everybody. I'm Will Ragsdale and I live at 411 East Main Street here in Jamestown. And my wife, Mary, and I own the Jamestown Equestrian Center. And we really don't want to move it, but we've got a development that's come in behind us and it's actually right beside our riding ring. And so, our business is one in which we board horses for little girls primarily. We have a junior high and senior high riding team. The girls travel and show the horses. And we're really worried about the safety of the girls and their horses as well. And so, and we also have a waiting list, so we're growing and expanding, so we're going to have to find another place for our farm. And being from Jamestown, I really wish we could keep it here. It would be great. But I've worked with Brad and his team and have looked at the plan itself and I'm in support of what they're doing. I don't think that they're going to do anything that would be detrimental to Jamestown. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to him.
Sure. Thanks, Will. Brad Yoder, 4150 Menon Hall Oaks Parkway. I'm here on behalf of the applicants and I certainly appreciate your time, the opportunity to present here today, and really appreciate this air conditioning. This is fantastic. It is hot outside. So, you know, we've worked hard to work with your staff, your planning board, and now have an opportunity to sit in front of you and address any questions that you may have. We would respectfully like to ask for a continuance tonight as we all feel that you're going to need some time to absorb this. We're going to need some time to work through some things, but would still like to have a discussion with you about anything, everything revolving around the plan, our intentions, and anything we could do to move this forward.
Any questions for Will or Brad?
Yeah. So, if you are requesting a continuance, do you anticipate there's going to be any substantive change?
I get you.
Changes to the plan?
Well, that depends. You know, we feel like we've still got a little bit of work to do and we'd still like to work with all of you to make sure that we all get comfortable with whatever plan we do decide to move forward and have a vote on hopefully in July. So, I...
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering because you heard the planning board's feedback back in April, but the only real change that, unless I'm incorrect, please do correct me if I'm wrong, is the only real change that has occurred is that there's now two entry points on Chadwick instead of one?
That's correct. So, we went back to the original plan that we originally presented both to staff as well as to the planning board. And in doing so, this was the plan that was better received by both the DOT, fire, and then staff did support the original plan, at least originally. And so, in doing that, we felt like that was a better play because we had first and foremost staff support and then the DOT and the fire. So, that was a better plan for developers. That was a better plan just for the overall community. It offered better opportunities internally to the community. It was more efficient and felt like that was a safer play. Also, the resistance that we were met with with the one entrance on Guilford College, that was the plan that had the planning board denial, not the original plan. So, we felt like it was better, safer to go back to what had a more welcoming, open-arms approach to the original presentation versus the second presentation that was turned down.
Okay. So, do you feel that the... Look, I have a lot of questions because I took over recently. I was the planning board chair for many years.
Okay.
So, do you feel like the just the two entrances really addressed the crux of what the planning board's concerns were and the citizens' concerns were?
I believe it does. So, it creates a safety issue both for traffic internally to the community as well as the DOT preference, the fire preference, fire marshal preference for the community. Additionally, it offers us an ability to maintain that Chadwick Drive look. I mean, it's a beautiful tree-lined area. We want to try to maintain it as much as possible. So, we feel like that is more agreeable for all those involved. And then backing up to some of our original conversations, really what was better received.
I don't have any further questions.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Sure. Yeah.
No, I'd like to hear what the public has to say.
Sure. Pretty illustrative, so a little easier to look at, colored. Sure. Pretty illustrative, so, a little easier to look at, colored, obviously reflects the 99 units, it shows, you know, the two entrances coming in off of Chadwick. There are going to be sidewalks through the community, so, listening to the community, some of the folks that live on Chadwick, their concern is they're walking the kids, walking the dogs on Chadwick Drive. Well, now we have an internal sidewalk network that also connects to Guilford College, so we feel like we've overcome that objection by offering what, what we have in this current plan.
Any other comments, council?
No.
We may be back to you, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're here.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public to hearing to anyone who would like to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. You can discuss the annexation and the rezoning request at this time.
Good evening. I'm James Bowman. I live with my wife Jill at 201 Chadwick Drive in Jamestown. We've lived here for over 32 years. Since we were raised our children, we moved here because of the unique charm and character of Jamestown. There are many reasons for you to deny this rezoning request. Most significantly, it just does not fit, it's too dense. It does not conform to the current homes and aesthetics of the surrounding properties, and it does not conform to the comprehensive plan. Here are a few quotes from the guiding principles of the comprehensive plan. Ensure the development is compatible with surroundings from both use and aesthetics perspective. Avoid introduction of generic and monotonous development styles that detract from Jamestown's unique sense of place and small-town charm. Protect established neighborhoods from encroachment by adjacent incompatible land use through appropriate zoning regulations. Protect connected tracks of open space from development to preserve wildlife habitat and protect the environment. The increased density of the plan is not compatible with the median situation on Guilford College Road. Whether the traffic flows from Chadwick Drive or from a dedicated access onto Guilford College Road, every trip involves at least one U-turn that are inherently unsafe. Hundreds of more cars making U-turns and waiting on cars to make U-turns would be a nightmare. And actually, Chadwick Drive is not even suitable for two-lane traffic. It's such a small road, I can't believe the people that have done the traffic assessment have even looked at it. Jamestown is presently going through major changes with current development of the Johnson property. I believe it would be in the best interest of Jamestown to avoid approving any rezoning that would further impact the Guilford College Road corridor until you are able to assess the impact on the new Johnson property development that will have on the town. The approval of this rezoning would require a complete disregard for the comprehensive plan. Please follow your planning board's recommendation and the comprehensive plan and deny this annexation request and deny the request for continuance. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight to the matter at hand. My name is Marion Bowling. I moved to Cedarwood from High Point 37 years ago. I always heard Jamestown was a proud community that did everything first-class. When I moved here, Guilford Road was a two-lane rural road full of charm and character, and the horse farm added to that character. There was one stoplight between our home and Interstate 40. Today, I travel Guilford Road and I pass Whittington Hall, The Cove, Wellington, Jamesford Meadows, Stone Gables, and others that have come over these 37 years. They're all enhancements to our community and add to the attractiveness that causes others to want to come and live here. I am not opposed to change and progress, and I've told my wife, Marty, over and over, new development is coming. We just hope it wouldn't come during our lifetime. But anyway, it is our wish that the horse farm would always be there. We love it. But if its time has come, then I ask you to continue to do everything first-class, following the plan that you have already adopted, and give us something else that would be an enhancement and would preserve the beauty and character and reputation from the past. Thank you.
Mr. Bowman, would you give the clerk your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Would you please give the clerk your address?
202 Cedarwood Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jan Blue. That was my dad. My husband Scott and I live at 631 Hickory Hollow Road. We were both born and raised in High Point, and military life took us away for a little while. And when it was time to return, Jamestown was at the top of the list for us to find a home, so especially that I could be close to my dad again. We've lived in apartments, multifamily dwellings, and neighborhoods with HOAs, and we were happy to find our home on an acre with the beauty of the horse farm behind us. We were devastated to receive the rezoning and annexation notices for this property. Knowing that the envisioned plan that is in place, one has to ask why there would even be a consideration to place a vinyl-wrapped community on that property, as it certainly does not conform to the guiding principles that address high-quality, desired aesthetics aligning with the surrounding area, nor protection of the surrounding vegetation, wildlife, and the watershed. And we're all concerned about how the runoff from this project might affect our well water. Mr. Bowman has already addressed the issue of traffic, that was another comment that I was going to make, to just reiterate that Chadwick residents have to turn right and then immediately take a U-turn if they're going to travel south on Guilford College. We don't have that issue is because we can turn right or left, but we are already seeing an increase in traffic, and so we are actually, from the Hickory Hollow residents, are having to utilize that same U-turn now more often than we had in the past. The applicant referred to this proposed development appealing to empty nesters. I've been an occupational therapy assistant for 25 years in the hospital setting, and I can tell you that this design in no way appeals to those who are empty nesters, especially those who are beginning to have mobility issues with its two-story design. Refer to such communities as the Stone Gables and Jordan Creek is some that my dad had mentioned earlier. Those are better examples of communities for empty nesters who are wanting to age in place. The bottom line is that this plan is not compatible with the surrounding communities and the landscape, and we're asking that you uphold this envisioned plan that is in place and reject the request to rezone and annex this horse farm property on Guilford College Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Keith Wagner. I live at 102 McFarland Court, Jamestown. Land is a precious resource, and the plot we're discussing today is particularly important for Jamestown. This lot will become part of our town's gateway and is one of the few remaining development opportunities in our district. Reflect on the pride we took when Jamestown developed Whittington Hall with its grand entrance, manicured view from Guilford Road. Will this proposed plan for this new development provide the same aesthetic appeal? With Johnson Farms' addition, Guilford College Road is now the gateway to Jamestown. Good planning has made this road a scenic entry point unlike, say, Gate City. Does this proposed plan fit with the current look and feel of Guilford College Road? The envisioned Jamestown comprehensive plan guides us here. It emphasizes the importance of maintaining a character corridor that complements the rural nature of Jamestown's outskirts. It highlights the preservation of mature trees, white pasture fences, in a generally rural quality despite our metropolitan location. Our scenic corridors, zoning regulations aim to ensure this vision is maintained and enhanced. The current proposal does not align with this vision. It would create a wall of vinyl siding similar to the Polte development on Mackey Road and maximize profits at the expense of our town's character. The Johnson Farm property initially faced a similar plan, which was rejected. So, at the Johnson Farm property, we now have a mixed-use neighborhood with parks, walking trails, offering 3.2 units per acre instead of the proposed 5.3 units per acre with minimal green space offered here. This land's value is partly due to the surrounding single-family homes on one-acre lots. And I only say that because that's brought up a lot. It's, this is the only economical way to develop this property is high-density. And I shared that recording with you, that the land developer admitted, this is high-density, and this is the only way we can do this. And I reject that. Jamestown deserves a better plan that respects our town's character and enhances our community's gateway. Thank you.
Thank you.
You get to hear from one of your little residents first.
Tell them your name.
I'm James and I live on 205 Chadwick Drive.
Okay, now tell them what you want to say.
I really like the trees, please don't chop them down and leave them alone.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Messer and I live at 205 Chadwick Drive. And I'm a newer resident to Jamestown. I've been here for close to six years this fall now. I come from the rural mountains in Tennessee. And when I knew my husband was taking a job in Greensboro, I was horrified because I was not a city girl. And then we discovered our property on Chadwick, and the mountain girl in me was just delighted because as I explored Jamestown, I discovered the park, I discovered all of the green space, all of the walkability, we could go bike riding as a family, and I was relieved. And then as we've continued this process with the rezoning request and all of the things, we realized that you guys have spent a lot of time and a lot of resources to plan out how to make that continue for a very long time. And so, my first request is just to respectfully continue to follow your plan because it's working for you. Anyone who comes to visit us is amazed when they see Jamestown because it doesn't look like Greensboro, it doesn't look like High Point, and you guys have done a great job at maintaining the look, the feel, the charm. When we knew that Polte was going to be building 20 townhomes at the end of our road, we were not thrilled, to say the least. My husband and I are both aware that you can't stop development, you can't stop progress, but we would like for it to happen responsibly, and we would like for it to be sustainable growth because from a business standpoint, I'm in accounting, if you grow too fast and you just start slapping stuff in, that's what leads to collapse or crumble. I think initially, Polte had approval to put in 60 townhomes from Greensboro, and they declined to put that many in because they said that would be too many for our little road on Chadwick, and so they only are putting in the 20 townhomes. When it was presented to the board, they were actually horrified that there were going to be two entrances on Chadwick and were happy that it was going to be off of Guilford. So, the initial comment at the beginning of the meeting that they would have approved that one just based on the Chadwick entrances, that was not my experience from the meeting. The guiding principle for walking and biking, my appeal as a young mother is, I have two small children, a third on the way. Yes, you can walk around townhomes, but kids don't want to see townhomes. They want to see trees, they want to see animals. I understand if the horse farm has outgrown their area, but something else that is more reasonably developed, I think, would be a better idea because we want to still be able to walk in and out of our road to access the sidewalks to Jamestown for biking, walking. And so, we just respectfully request that you guys deny both of these, and we really are appreciative of all of your guys' hard work. Volunteering for this mess is not easy, so we're thankful for each of you guys.
My name is Sal Taro. I live at 120 Duchess Court. And I didn't plan on talking tonight, but I just put a little something together. I'm representing like 30 residents of the Grove neighborhood, and I've even had our values, our houses around 600,000 to 800,000, and it would definitely, I feel like, take our property values down. And I've even had a few neighbors saying they would probably move if this went through. There's just too much building and expansion going on right now with the Mackey Road and, you know, with the Ted Johnson Farm, and, you know, people love Jamestown, the small charm of it, and I hope you guys will just consider that. And you've done a great job so far, and I just, you know, we definitely oppose it in our neighborhood, 30 residents, and hope you guys will keep it nice and, you know, the way it is now. We really do appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Charles Hensley, and I live at 109 Winrow Drive in Jamestown. Just like this gentleman here, I didn't come with a prepared speech. I came to kind of listen and learn about what I've been hearing and reading about throughout the news and through conversations with friends. And I can understand both sides, those who want to rezon and annex and those who are opposed to that. I'm originally from Asheville, North Carolina, so I have a perspective in terms of the beauty of this state and what it offers to those who enjoy the beauty of living in environments such as the mountains or having trees in your neighborhood. I grew up with that kind of thing. But I also can see where this process, to me, might be almost unstoppable because I've already seen that there's been trees chopped down and areas have been cleared out. And if those areas have been cleared out, trees have been chopped down, that seems to me as though some entity is in the process of moving forward with developing that land. I don't know at what stage that that can be stopped in this process. I'm not sure what the rezoning annexation requirements are and how that's to impact on the residents that live in that particular area. But it seems to me that this is almost a sophisticated form of gentrification in a different form. And so, I just would like for the council to really think about the impact of what this community is asking for you to consider for those who do not wish for the development to occur, at the same time, to consider what's being offered by those who want to develop the land, and then weigh it within the history of Jamestown. What some of the people have spoke about in terms of them growing up here and them appreciating the aesthetics of the community, and give it serious, serious consideration because you have families and businesses that are impacted or will be impacted by the development or the lack of the development. But certainly, the trees that have already been cut down, they're gone. Thank you.
I am Jenny Wagner. I live at 102 McFarland Court. I implore you to uphold the decision that was made by the planning board. They listened to all of our conversations and our comments and denied building this high-density townhome in our community that's surrounded by one-acre homes. The planning board and the community members found that their request for high-density did not meet Jamestown's standards as outlined in the vision Jamestown plan. We also objected very much to the entrance being developed on Chadwick Drive. They came back, they changed that, then once again, they've come back and changed it again, and this has been the only change that they've had. So, when they're asking for a continuance, I ask that you deny it because they do not come back with substantial changes to the density, which is a big issue, along with the entrance. Because I live on McFarland, which is off of Chadwick, it does affect my ability to walk, my ability to ride bikes because of this traffic coming out on our road. We are already going to have to be burdened with the additional 20 town units back there, and then have 99 more come out on our road would make it impossible to ever walk, much less ever get out of our neighborhood. The land developer, as my husband mentioned- The land developer, as my husband mentioned, also shared during a community meeting that he did not want this type of neighborhood even next to his home. And I do not think that there is any citizen in the city of Jamestown or the town of Jamestown that wants this type of high-density neighborhood next to their home. I don't even think our petitioner would want it next to his home. So I urge you to say no to the planning board and to say no to a continuance and keep our neighborhood within the envision that Jamestown had.
Thank you.
We live at 101 Chadwick Drive. Sandy is my wife. We've been there for 20-some years. As adjacent homeowners, we request the council to deny this change to single-family residential zoning. The planning board agrees this proposal fails to consider several areas of the envisioned Jamestown guiding principles that are in place to protect existing property owners and our community's quality of life. For one example, the DOT has replied to the road safety issue. And they are requiring, as I understand it, a 250-foot turn lane and 150-foot taper lane for the new entry on Guilford College Road. To avoid that expense of adding that turn lane, the developer changed the plan back and is now asking for the two entrances on Chadwick Drive. We estimate this will add a minimum of 150 vehicles who will use Chadwick Drive as their only access to Guilford Road. The inconvenience and safety risks are being placed onto Chadwick and McFarland Court property owners. The additional road traffic also creates a need for a sidewalk along Chadwick Drive for pedestrian safety. Unfortunately, the developer considers adding the sidewalks would be too expensive. The planning board and staff have worked very hard to provide equity and consistency for both the property owners and the surrounding neighbors. There's been little detail provided in this request. We are asking that any future requests provide specific information pertaining to the quality of construction, materials, and details on land that is used beyond defining just the wetland. We are serious, we have serious concerns over the lack of engineering on stormwater drainage details. I previously sent you all a personal note regarding this issue of drainage and how we need to look and have the TRC do some research on this random and watershed issue. There's a stormwater limitation set by the random and issue, and I hope you will look into it and get some more detail for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eric James and I live on 6314 Hickory Hollow Road. And I've been there 27 years with my mother, who just turned 95. In fact, she used to keep Ms. Ragsdale. And in fact, Ms. Ragsdale told us about the house we moved in. So we moved there on her behalf. And I was actually in an accident three months ago on Guilford College. A guy pulled out in front of me, said he didn't see me. And three weeks later, the same accident happened again in the same spot. And I just went by and I said, I know that feeling. So I'm saying this to you guys that not only the traffic is going to be more there, you have the Mackey Road traffic that's going to come that way as well, once they develop that. There's a lot of buses that stop through there and I sit there sometime and I watch and I see how long it takes traffic to get out. And the older, elder person who's still driving may not can make that U-turn as quick and people are impatient now. So I know that for a fact because the guy said he just didn't see me. And it wasn't dark, it was like 6:30, but the other accident happened in pre-daylight, so there was two different times. So I say that no to this annex and I hope you guys will do the same because I take my mother out in a wheelchair now and I roll her out and I let her know that this may change. And she says, oh my gosh. And I said, yep. So I'm asking that you keep this for her.
Thank you.
I'm Maxine Fisher, 203 Chadwick Drive, mayor and council members. We built our home on this property 43 years ago because of the zoning that was in place as was then and is of now, single-family, low-density. This area is rural in nature and currently under the jurisdiction of Jamestown ETJ. When we and the other property owners in this immediate area built our homes, it was with the understanding that the property all around us, the zoning of that property would ensure us the setting that we desired. Now, we find that an out-of-town developer is requesting to have a multifamily, high-density development project that is not in keeping with the surrounding area inserted into the very midst of this tranquil setting. This is in conflict with your comprehensive plan, which was developed by Jamestown in 2020, which concluded this property should be suburban, single-family. This rezoning request does not fit in with that, with what is envisioned for Jamestown in any way. In addition, the developer is requesting access to Chadwick Drive, which is a very short, approximately two-block-long street, rural in nature, and it's a ribbon road. It's located, and the main access to the property they're wanting to rezone is on the Guilford College Road that has served as the entrance for the equestrian facility. And as I understand it, you talk about the NC DOT and the fire marshal preferring two entrances onto this little two-block-long street. It might, I've also read that it could, they would approve either one, either from the Guilford College Road, but that requires a turn lane, or they'll approve it off of Chadwick Drive. I envision us trying to get out of Chadwick Drive. Sometimes when I go up Chadwick Drive, I sit there for a while trying to even turn right so I can go make my left turn to go back to Jamestown. This would back up traffic all the way down in front of my home and I'm in the second block. In a, okay, getting off topic here. We feel that we developed according to the required zoning and we have no objection to a developer who will develop this land in accordance with the current zoning and in keeping with the neighborhoods in this surrounding area. As residents of Jamestown, we rely on you all, our council members, to assure us of the quality of life that we have come to appreciate and to protect us from builders who would come in and develop to standards that are not in keeping with the surrounding environment. We respectfully request that Jamestown Town Council not approve this rezoning request and grant us the people who actually live in the area the continued present zoning.
Thank you.
My name is Charles Perry Hebert. I live at 6312 Hickory Hollow Road. I was here two months ago and heard every argument that these people brought up tonight and that they communicated to the planning board. Why do we have a planning board? The planning board was unanimous in turning this thing down and I hope you follow their lead. Thank you.
My name is Ricky Lewis and I reside at 6306 Hickory Hollow Road in Jamestown and along with my wife, Delbra Lewis. And I brought my two sons along, even though they're grown men, they really wanted to see what was going on here. And we have those two sons that we raised and we really, we've been here about 20 years, 19, 20 years, and they really enjoy the small town and the close association we have with our neighbors. You know, a wise man once said, wisdom is lost in the abundance of words. And we heard a lot of words here, but we do have wisdom and that wisdom is that envisioned document. That kind of pulls everything back together. I know as a school teacher, the principal used to tell us, always have a lesson plan where you state what is the word of the day and also what is the most essential question in that lesson plan. And I feel the most essential question has been density. And if we use that word, density, and we start extracting what we can learn from that, we can see that this plan is a very dense plan, almost like what the principal told me. He said, you know what? You guys are doing a good job in technology. Tesla's interested in your kids. We're going to add 10 more kids to your 25 and we're going to give you an extra exit door. We're going to give you an office and all these things. It was a big flop because of density. That was the word of the day, density. So hopefully we can keep that in mind, that we do have wisdom in that envisioned statement. This request to change the zoning to of Jamestown Equestrian Center in Guilford County, on Guilford County Road, from a single-family to a residential, multifamily residential, is almost like an attack on that foundation that the envisioned principle is guiding us with. I want to thank you for allowing us to have this time to talk to the board with these concerns and thoughts on the proposal to request this property. We really know as the horse farm, but that gives you the idea how we felt as a community because it actually pulled us together. So we have no control of whether that is sold to someone or not, but we do have control with that wisdom. We have that document to help us to make the best decision for the citizens of Jamestown. So I wish to object strongly to the rezoning and the development of these multifamily homes in the location in our neighborhood because it does not maintain the character of the community. And second, that word of the day, density. Density exceeds any reasonable aspect that is established in the surrounding neighborhood. And then third, it ignores the fact that Jamestown has created an envisioned statement and all can see that that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
My name is Peyton Woody. I'm here on behalf of my brother and his wife, Nathan and Jamie Woody, at 6308 Hickory Hollow Drive. They couldn't be here tonight, they're on vacation. First want to point out, there's an error on the certificate of sufficiency here for the annexation. Item B says the area described in the petition is contiguous to the town of Jamestown, primary corporate limits as defined by General Statute 168-31. This property is not contiguous to the city limits. There's actually a gap there, it's separated by Hickory Hollow. So there's an error there that needs to be addressed. Going on into that, though, the plan itself, as someone that's done and completed many of these rezoning plans over the years, we've always had to demonstrate to the staff and to board that we meet the minimum requirements of the LDO. I can't tell you that this plan does. I don't think anybody here can sit here and tell you that this plan can or will meet the requirements of the LDO. I've done a thorough review of the LDO and can tell you that it does not meet those requirements and cannot meet those requirements. Lot sizes, sidewalks, improvements, street improvements, you know, just foregoing street improvements because we want to preserve the character of Chadwick, what about the character of the community? You know, there's a lot of things here that just seems like we're trying to avoid, just to say money, that at the end of the day, doesn't make for a nice project for the community in itself. And that's why we're here. We all want a project, at the end of the day, that everyone's going to enjoy living in and can say, wow, that turned out to be nice. I don't see that. I think it's evident that people behind us here don't see that as by, a majority of the people in the room are against this. Planning board voted no. Staff hasn't even made a recommendation that I can see typically staff provides a recommendation for rezonings, I would think. With them not even willing to back it, how can you guys make an educated decision to support this project? There's again, a lot of things, the planning of itself, it's just bad planning. The planning of itself is not consistent with state board rules for certification. It doesn't have engineer's seal on it. He's supposed to stamp that plan preliminary or put their seal on it. So that in itself is in violation of the state board rules. So there's so many things that are just inconsistent with the comp plan, inconsistent with the LDO. I don't understand how you guys can sit up here and make a real educated decision to approve this project and see it as a betterment for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 205 Chadwick Drive. So previously, I had sent an email to the town council talking about how the town of Jamestown is such a wonderful place because it reminds, to me, because it reminds me of some of the wonderful places I've lived at various times in my life, small towns that make for good communities. And when I moved here, I was very much excited to see that Jamestown was developing in a way that would allow me to interact with my neighbors. Not that COVID helped with that. But going forwards, I'm getting to, I'm looking forward to the opportunities that Jamestown is enabling by the development plans. And looking at this proposed development, it doesn't seem to match that development plan and would do the things that, that would, that in opposition to that development plan that would hurt our community by not providing the facilities and means for the community to develop in the first place, whether the people wanted to take advantage of them or not. I'm opposed to this rezoning because of the lack of compliance with the envisioned Jamestown plan. And I urge you to please follow the plan that you have spent so much time and money investing in. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Yeah. I had not planned to speak, so I apologize. John Cape, 704 Nell Drive, Jamestown. Full disclosure, y'all know this, but I'm an alternate on the planning board and was at both of the meetings that involved this development. I think it's important to recap a couple of things. The first meeting that we had, the plan that was up here was the plan that we looked at. After we had discussions about density and we had discussions about traffic, which were big concerns, not the least of which was just the traffic patterns, ingress, egress, everything that was going on with that development, we opted to continue the meeting for one month and then have a second meeting with the interest of seeing, okay, do you have anything else you can bring to us to show us, based on what we've shared, that could help further this discussion along? As it stood realistically, the, they came back with one in and out, which was on Guilford College and nothing on Chadwick. Now, that's fine, but nothing else had changed as far as the density, the design, or anything else. We still had concerns and even more so because it's a bottleneck and had it been 100 units instead of 99, there would be a, I believe, and I may be wrong on this, but there would be some type of safety provision when it relates to the fire department because of the number of units that were there. My point is that now they brought back the first My point is that now they brought back the first plan, and they're asking you to continue that, which we've already done one time, and they're seeing the second plan, which was the Guilford College entrance, and it was only one entrance, and when I asked them point blank, well, they want to continue it again, I said, what else do you plan to do? And I said, is there gonna be a lot of changes, other than maybe sticking an outlet on Chadwick? And the answer was, probably not. That was the crux of it. Bottom line, safety, density's not great at all. And I'm, I'm a big proponent of, you know, let people do what they need to with their land and, and all that. I'm not against townhouses, houses per se, but it doesn't, it didn't make sense. It still doesn't, and now they're back to the original plan. I think that's the crux of the discussion, is that nothing has changed here. They're, they're back to the original plan that they did three months ago, or however long ago it was, and we're not any farther along with it. But now they want you to continue it, which is a cycle we've already been through one time, and we don't need to keep spinning this wheel, in my opinion. That's really all I've got. I just, I wanted to make sure that we recapped that and talked about it, because we're right back to the plan we saw four months ago. And it's already been well researched, well vetted, and well discussed. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else that'd like to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll return to council for any discussion or questions at this time.
Well, it's not all talk at once. I was sort of wanting to start at the beginning there on the application, so this will be a question for either the applicant or the developer, I don't know. I'm sure you can hear me. I'm usually pretty loud. Yeah, Brad, you wanna come up?
That'd be fun.
Because I'm assuming you filled out the application? Or someone from your company?
I'm here on behalf of Brad Coe. Brad had a second rezoning this evening.
You're, you're still Brad, okay.
Yes, same, yeah, another Brad.
Well, I was, in, in looking at the application, I was looking at the question, just, this is clarification for me. There was a question about to describe how the properties around your site are used, residential churches, business schools, and how the proposed project may impact the surrounding area, be it noise, traffic, light, impact on environment, other unique features. So you did say there are residential homes around the site, including attached townhomes, and I'm assuming you're talking about the townhomes in Greensboro?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's the Pulte Homes, which is Greensboro?
That is correct. The contiguous property to the east, yes.
Then you take it further, I just want to clear this up. Regarding traffic, the impact should be minimized due to the low number of units. And to me, that's a very subjective statement, because I don't think it's a low number of units, so I wanted to get that out there.
Okay.
That, that was all I had on that, I think. But then back on the environmental impact, and this was on the conditions you put on here, and I, this is, print is so small, it's hard for me to read it. I'm the oldest person, I can't read it. But, and Anna talked about it, there's a pond somewhere near here, and was worried about runoff, and there's a certain, is it bathymetric?
Bathymetric study.
What is that?
We would go do a survey of the property, inclusive of testing the water, to ensure that throughout the development of the community, that it was not impacted negatively. So we would do it prior to development starting.
I don't understand how that's, how you, how you would be able to know that it's not going to impact it.
Well, we would do tests prior to, and then if there were changes to the water, changes to that particular property, then, then, you know, it would be brought to our attention. We would have to retest it.
Yeah, what would you do if they?
We would have to fix it.
How would you fix it?
Well, it depends on what's wrong.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I just was unclear about what that was.
Sure.
That's, that's it for the moment. I don't know if y'all have other things?
Did you have any questions at this time?
Now, I just, did you ever take into consideration the surrounding homes?
Oh, absolutely. I think that's a big driver on, that was a big driver in the selection of type of product, as well as the density for the property. We're at approximately a 40% built pond for, based on the watershed there. We can go up to a 50%. We felt like we conformed well and have a, an improved product in what you see on the eastern side of the border, on the Pulte community, albeit a Greensboro community, but an improvement on what we would hope to see on the Jamestown Equestrian property. And then additionally, for the area, I mean, what's going on at Johnson Farm? This is a product that's been approved in the past, it's been walked, it's been well received, as well as what's in Jordan Creek. I mean, we've, we, we are conforming to what's in the area.
Please, let's, let's, we need to be fair to the landowner and to the surrounding neighbors and the community. We need to be, we need to be fair to everyone.
Well, and keep in mind that, you know, when building this product previously, both in Greensboro and now currently getting ready to start building in Bermuda Run, I mean, you're talking about a $400,000 townhome with masters on the main, so, you know, it's, it's, we're listening to Jamestown. This is an age-targeted or an accredited retirement community. We're trying to pay attention to things like that, what the community is asking of us, what's already here, and adding a component, a, a product here that's gonna further support that with a master down component, that's who we've seen our buyer profiles be in other locations. So, you know, to us, the market tells us what to do. The market tells us where to price. The market tells us how to develop. So it, it feels like the market is telling us, this is a product that would be well received both by Jamestown, well received by what Mother Nature offers on that property, as well as conforming to the ordinances and conforming to the rest of the community.
Well, of course, some of the comments that were made, people talked about there needed to be more engineering, there needed to be all these other things.
Without question.
Now, what this board is to do is, is the land use. That's what we're to consider. And then there's others, is, is it appropriate for this? Then those other things are done prior to any building permits or any actual building. But, and if someone has a question, I'll stop, but I'll keep going if not. I just, you know, the North Carolina General Statutes, which is 160D-605A, that's what requires us as a governing body to approve a statement adopting or rejecting a zoning tax or a map amendment that describes whether their actions is consistent or inconsistent with an adopted comprehensive land use plan, which you've heard very much about the Envision Jamestown Comprehensive Plan.
Yes, ma'am.
Which, of course, I sat on the steering committee, and Pam sat on the steering committee, and it was about an 18-month process. So there was a lot of thought, and, and as people said, money too, put into that. And also, part of that statute is the, requires a statement of reasonableness. And so when adopting or rejecting, you know, that zoning map amendment, we have to analyze the reasonableness of a proposed rezoning by the board. And the General Statute lists several items the board can consider when deciding the reasonableness of a rezoning. And one of many, but one of them, is the benefits or detriments to the landowner, to the neighbors, and to the surrounding communities. So those are things we have, by law, we have to keep in mind. And as many here tonight have talked, in reviewing that Envision Jamestown Comprehensive Plan, and Anna has read it, which I appreciate taking the time to do it, the future land use plan map shows this parcel is in the suburban residential land use category, which states in part, although primarily developed in larger, single-family homes residential subdivision, this land use classification is also intended to accommodate lower intensity attached residential development. And then when undeveloped land is included in that classification, it is intended to be developed in a manner similar to adjacent subdivision residential development. So to me, that's key.
Absolutely.
What is being proposed, as I said from your application, I think is subjective on your opinion, but it is not lower intensity attached residential use, which to me makes that inconsistent with the, with our Envision plan, and is not, not reasonable. But certainly we'll hear what others have to, to say on their thoughts about that.
Sure, thank you.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I don't want to.
No, I have questions. I just have comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, and I would say that also, when, when considering any, any land use plan, the recommendations of the Planning Board, and of course, what they went through. And you have been through many of those.
Yes, yes, I have.
And I think it also should be noted, as said, it was April the 8th, I think, when the Planning Board met and denied the rezoning, so that's what, over two months, you could have gotten something back to our Planning Director that would show a meaningful change to accommodate what's in the plan.
Well, Martha, we, we would love to have further discussion about some of the things that we've done to hopefully accommodate some of those requests. We, this is, this is the request for continuance, request to continue working on this, further discussion.
Please be respectful of the speaker.
Thank you. So, so that's our intent tonight, is to, to ensure that we'd like to continue these conversations with you all.
So, so that, I guess I do have a question then, because that leads me back to the question I asked originally.
Sure.
Yeah.
Do you, because, because as Martha just pointed out, and as, I guess, the point I was trying to make at the beginning, that it, it was two months ago, and there has been no substantial change to the plan. So if we were to continue, it, is there really any plan to make any substantial change?
Well, there have been substantial changes, and so in some of those conditions, you, you, it's listed there, some of the changes.
Maybe, I guess I'm confused. Could you note the substantial changes?
Oh, sure, materials. The materials of the, of the units, offering up the product types, I mean, these are substantial, substantial changes as far as costs for both development and construction.
So that's the, that's, the substantial changes, the materials?
Oh, sure, the accommodation. We, our understanding was the accommodation was, the density would be well received if, if the materials and the improvement in the quality of the homes was increased.
Can I, can I ask you where that impression came from? That was not the impression I had during the other meetings with the?
In our discussions with the town throughout this process, those have been our consistent discussions.
In, in public forums, or?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I think that's one of the key issues, is that it doesn't fit what the suburban residential subdivision is to be, which is, yes, you can have some multifamily, but it's lower intensity. And I do, like I said, that may be a subjective thing, but you're asking for more than what would be allowed. So I, I don't see that as reasonable or consistent. And since we have asked, you have asked twice, what would a continuance do? I don't see that saw, you know, helping anything much. I don't see what, where you're going with that. And you did that at the Planning Board, and it's.
Well, it, it's given the opportunity to work with you all. I mean, as, as you're well aware, we would love to have had, you know, sit downs, further discussion and continue working the plan. So, you know, we'd love to have that opportunity to do that. I mean, you know, while, while not having opportunities to face you all yet until this public opportunity, I mean, I think that's unfair to you, because you're just now seeing the plan. So we're, we're starting a process with you. While having gone through this with both staff and the Planning Board, this is your first look, is your first opportunity. So our hope is, as the decision makers of Jamestown, that, that you would, would want that opportunity to, to work the plan along with us.
I mean, we, you know, we, we have been engaged in this process as far as, I'm, to be all, you know, watched the Planning Board meetings and have stayed on top of things, and, and we have seen that the plan hasn't changed, and so. And, and yes, you're right, you, you have reached out to us to try to have private meetings, and we've said no, because we feel like once we're in process, that maybe that should all be a public situation. But we have been paying attention and do know what's going on. And so I, I tend to agree with Martha, and, you know, again, having seen how things went at the Planning Board, you know, it's not in keeping with the area around. So much of zoning is about, you know, what, what's the joint property like? And yes, although there are multifamily structures in Greensboro, that's Greensboro. We have nothing to do with that. Everything around is single-family residential, and, you know, I don't really see a reason, especially for this plan, to go outside of that.
Well, the, the property, excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't want to. So the, the property contiguous to the Jamestown Equestrian, you know, that is, that is townhomes. And, you know, the other properties that are in Guilford County around the Jamestown Equestrian Center, while I certainly understand, you know, some of the concerns, I mean, we, we listen, we're, you know, I am sympathetic to some of those things. However, when, when those properties were developed, those properties were in the county, still in the county, and were developed a very different way with well and septic. Now, we on this property have access to both public water, public sewer. It's what, it's what happens with growth. So, you know, just like the, the before-mentioned properties in Jordan Creek and Stone Gables, and of course, Mackey Point with the Pulte property, you know, this, this is how properties are developed now. So I, I understand your interpretation. You're saying it's subjective, and I agree. You know, it is a subjective thing, but however, our interpretation is that this does meet the criteria, and this does fit within the conforming spirit of what the, the LDO and the, the ordinances say.
I, I think to your point too, one of the things that I've been considering is, so Guiding Principle number 10 here, Jamestown is a welcoming and inclusive community that values the benefits of diversity in all aspects of the town and its residents. And then promote the development and retention of a wide range, and that, that's my emphasis, wide range of housing types that meet the needs of current and future residents of all ages, abilities, family compositions, and socioeconomic backgrounds. So you had just mentioned some, some recent development, and so I, I moved here in 2008. And since I moved here, the developments that have, that have come to fruition include the Gannaway Townhomes, the Apartments by the Y, the Harvey Row Townhomes that are, you know, in process, the condos that we just discussed that are over by the, in Lenox Square, and Magnolia in Maine. And now I know with Johnson Farm, we do have, that is just getting underway, we do have some single family, but that also includes multifamily. So every, every, every development we've had since, since I moved here in 2008 has been a multifamily development. And so to me, that doesn't really meet the standard of a wide range of housing types. And, and one of the things that I am concerned about is we do, we do have a lack of single-family housing in Jamestown that has driven up the price of single-family housing in Jamestown to quite high. You know, one resident mentioned that his home in, his community is $600,000 to $800,000. So Jamestown is becoming unaffordable to a lot of folks. And I think, you know, not that certainly it could not be a, a, the Equestrian, Equestrian Center could not be developed into a lot of single-family homes, but if, if the property owner wants to develop it as single-family homes, which is allowed by, by current zoning, then, you know, then that is actually contributing to a wider range of, of types of housing, rather than continuing this with.
So Sarah, piggybacking off what you said, so the North Carolina created the, the 160D statute, and in doing so, the spirit of that was to create a statewide blanket of how, how municipalities are supposed to view approval zoning and annexations. And doing so, some of that was done in the spirit of trying to make sure that housing always remained reasonably affordable, that we weren't creating, you know, a, a generation of renters. So this, this is our intent, is to ensure that we do create a wide range of housing, not only in Jamestown, but everywhere that we work. And so with 160D, their hope is that you do, you do have more open space, you do have more greenery, but that forces you to be denser in smaller pockets and areas. So the spirit of that bill when passed is absolutely supportive of exactly what we're trying to do here, is to make sure that we have a, a wide range of housing to ensure that everything isn't $600,000 to $800,000. I mean, that's just such a small portion of our population that can afford that house, less than 10%. Once you get over $400,000, that's approximately 10% of the tribe population that can, that can afford that house. So we don't want to be exclusive. We want to be inclusive here, and adding.
I, I apologize for interrupting. Didn't, didn't you say these townhomes would be about $400,000?
They, they range from high threes to low fours, that's correct, where we sold them before. And so that is our intent in Bermuda Run, where we plan to build those, is where we've built them in Greensboro. Now, where we built them in Greensboro, keep in mind, it's been a few years. So they started in the 300s and escalated to the high 300s, and there may be some in there that could hit $400,000. So our intent is to make sure that we're always supportive of all types of folks that are looking to move to Jamestown at all price points. However, this one specifically is an exception. Well, it's already been approved in Jamestown previously on the Johnson Farm. And so we felt like it was identified as a good product fit for, for this particular property. So in doing so, it also offered that master down capability, further supporting that, that age-targeted element to what Jamestown, I, I think, is the spirit of, of the town with the accreditation down at Town Hall. So, you know, when we were looking at this, we're looking at this as, as, as thinking through these obstacles and thinking through some challenges, listening to the market, and saying, this is going to be a good product and a good fit for Jamestown. So it was not done with reckless abandon. It's done with a lot of thought, with hopes that, that you're taking into consideration that we're trying to put a product here that's gonna work, both what contiguous behind us, as well as what's in the general area. And then additionally, to your point, Sarah, what's lacking in the area, and it's, and it's tiered pricing. So, you know, how, how can we look at this property and only attack with just a single-family product that you know is gonna be, you know, half a million dollars and up? I mean, we'd be lucky to build a single-family home there on that property with, with the units that we'd be able to get for half a million dollars. So what does that do? That further restricts folks. That further restricts folks that want to move to Jamestown and we're, we're not trying to do that at all. We want to be inclusive here.
The other thing that I just wanted to mention that when I was looking at this is I, I do just feel like maybe, you know, thinking about what the property owner mentioned about, you know, one of the reasons they're, they're looking to, to move their Equestrian Center is because of the development around it, their concern for the safety of the children who come there and for the horses. And I believe that the, from what I'm hearing in public comments is that those are the same concerns that the folks who live there now have about this property. And so I, I, I think it's a little disingenuous maybe to say that, that, and I, and I don't want to speak for you and that's just my interpretation, but to say that this, that this new plan really was in keeping with what the planning board was, was thinking about, I, I, I really don't think they were, I don't think their primary concern was the entrances to the, to the development. I think it was the density and the use...
And that's the reason why I asked earlier on, did you really take...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of your question.
I was saying that I was, to piggyback off of what Sarah was saying, I was really concerned about, did you really, or were you really visual on what is in Jamestown as far as the homes?
Without question.
The other thing, the other thing I'm going to say is that Mr. Capes, who was at all of, all of the meetings, because he is on the planning board, as I was, and he was extremely diligent in asking a lot of questions that your representative couldn't even answer. So I will say, I'll give you some props tonight because you're already answering this, the most I've heard. But I just can't understand why we would still need a continuance because I...
Well, it's the opportunity to keep the conversation going. You know, I mean, the, the, the Raxstalls want to sell their property and we're a, a capable buyer. We, we've hopefully gained your support and trust in the past here in this town and feel like we're a great option to be able to develop and build on this property. So while I understand that the planning board took a stance, they, they took a vote and I, and I understand that they, they, that they disagreed, you know, with our interpretation of the town ordinances. I, I understand, it is subjective. So we'd like to continue the conversation. You know, if there's something that you're looking for out of the plan, let's, let's talk about it. Let's, let's continue working with you to see if we can usher this forward and find a way to create a plan that everybody's proud of.
Well, I, you know, and I do believe in the rights of private property ownership. And so a, a property owner has a right to request, people say, why are we even here? That's the process. As landowner, you have a right to request to have your property reserved. So we have the process that we have to go through. Staff has to look at it, planning board makes a recommendation and the council looks at it. But then there are, that is where it all comes together, is what property owner can be allowed to do and how it, it goes in with the community and with the surrounding neighborhood. And that, what I keep coming back to is, is that suburban residential land use classification says lower intensity attached residential development. And this is not, in my opinion, my subjective opinion, and you're asking for more than is allowed, that it, it is not consistent with our plan. So I would say that it is inconsistent.
Well, as a council, do you feel, do you not feel like it's worthy of continued discussion since now we, we are speaking with you, now we're working with you as the decision makers of the town? Do you not feel like it's worthy, both for the, on behalf of the property owners as well as the developer builder here, to have continued work done? I mean, wouldn't you want to see a plan that you support on that location? I mean, it, it feels like it, you support listening to have a rezoning and annexation into Jamestown, but it would seem that you would want to continue the discussion to, to, to work a plan that works for you.
I haven't seen you have...
I, I think, you know, I, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I feel like this is no longer productive. And I would like the chance if there's any council members that want to speak amongst ourselves to do so. So if, if there are any last questions from Mr. Yoder?
No. No. I just don't see where any changes have been made in over two months. And I believe the council's pretty much our discussion, same that the planning board had. So you would have had an opportunity. And if there had been some substantial changes given tonight, then you may see a, see the continuance because you would say, okay, I see where you, you've listened and you've looked at this and you, you, you looked at the guiding principles and you actually made a movement in that way. But seeing none and coming in with the same thing, to me, so it shows just a lack of, you know, a desire to, to really do something meaningful. It's just you're going to do what this is.
Okay. I'd like to go ahead and put a motion on the table if that is okay. I'd like to move to deny the ordinance to extend the corporate limits for the annexation of 1905, 1915 and 1903 Guilford College Road.
We, we would like to withdraw the application. Thank you for your time.
Do you want us to vote?
No.
I just withdrew its application. Yes, sir.
They've requested the withdrawal of the application.
Okay.
So at this time, the applicant is with, asked to withdraw their application. And they have that right to do that up until the time of the vote. So they can preserve their right to bring back a different request at a future time.
Okay. Fine. Thank you. Now, I have a procedural question. If they've withdrawn their application, are they also withdrawing the rezoning request? Okay.
They have indicated that they are withdrawing both, yes.
Okay. Thank you. I've had a request for a 10-minute recess.
We do not have the additional public hearing, we'll go straight to the budget.
All right, good evening Mayor and Council. Before I start the slideshow, I've got a couple of things to run through. First of all, this is a little bit of a repeat from your Budget Retreat Number Four from June 13th. But we didn't have a whole lot of attendance there, so I was going to go through this one more time. At the May 21st Council meeting, there was a resident that stated that they had found over $100,000 in additional revenue. That's incorrect. Upon a thorough investigation by the Guilford County Tax Office, it was discovered that eight parcels that were owned by De'Aaron Horton were in fact billed incorrectly due to a software error. That was resolved, De'Aaron Horton has paid the additional monies owed. And as they had already paid a portion of the tax bill, they had approximately $56,000 that was left to collect. And that was due to the billing issue. From that, the town will owe the fire department approximately $19,000 and a portion of the revenue will need to be allocated to our Capital Reserve Fund, leaving approximately $35,000 or less in additional revenue, much less than the amount claimed. Staff recommended that the additional revenue for fiscal year 2324 be received, moved to fund balance at the end of this month. And revenue projections for fiscal year 2425 have been provided to the council in their proposed budget. And due to builder exemptions from the tax department, forecasted revenues will be lower for those eight parcels in fiscal year 2425. So we did not recommend changing the proposed budget based on those forecasts. And once the property develops and parcels are sold, the exemptions fall off and the town will begin to see cementary's tax revenue as the tax base grows. Just wanted to make that clarification. Information here that I'm going to read from now is found in your budget message originally submitted in May 21st and updated for tonight's meeting. "We are pleased to present the proposed budget for fiscal year 2425. This was prepared in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 159, the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. All funds within the proposed budget are balanced and all revenues and expenditures have been identified. The mission of the Town of Jamestown is to create an exceptional quality of life for all citizens by providing superior services. To help the town realize its long-term vision and continue to meet the mission statement systematically and incrementally, the mayor and council have adopted a strategic plan which we'll cover here shortly. And that was done in June of 2021. Each year, the council receives updates on the progress of the goals outlined in the plan in roughly six-month intervals. The council adopts an annual update of the strategic plan during the budget adoption, which we'll do shortly after this. It allows for continuity as staff and elected officials change, affords the citizens transparency related to the goals, which help determine allocation of resources during our annual budget process. Over the past fiscal year, staff have diligently been working to complete the goals outlined in the strategic plan. Some of the more notable accomplishments include: Seeking grant funding for sidewalks to improve pedestrian connectivity, Achieving minimum staffing levels in all departments, Development of music in the park and town-sponsored events, Discussions with our utility partners to plan for future needs, and working with Pine Creek Sedgefield Fire Department to plan for future capital needs. New goals have also been identified and staff will begin working on those with the adoption of our new budget beginning in July. Those include development and utilization of logos for the golf course's 50th anniversary to further market the golf course and the town, development of a citizen academy, and some clarification of the town's bidding process for projects. Finally, there will always be ongoing goals which the staff will continue to develop such as providing employee training, maintaining our codes and ordinances, providing for repair, improvement, and replacement of vehicles and facility needs, maintaining the integrity of our utility infrastructure, and the recruitment of employees from diverse population, among others. The recommended budget for fiscal year 2425 totals $17,370,048 for all town operations, capital improvements, transfers, and debt service. Total budget excluding the interest fund transfers amounts to $16,270,022. The budget as presented includes a tax rate of 62.5 cents for the 2425 fiscal year. And at that current tax rate, the amount of avalour and property tax revenues is estimated to be approximately $3,562,977. So $3,562,977. Based on a collection rate of 99%, sales and use tax revenues are expected to be just over $1 million, and tax tag motor vehicle taxes are estimated to be approximately $306,000. And that represents some of the larger general fund revenues. In the Water and Sewer Fund, the budget proposes to increase water rates by approximately 14% over the 2324 fiscal year rate, essentially passing along increases in rates from our partners at PTRWA, the City of Greensboro, and the City of High Point, all of whom the town purchased water from. The budget also proposes the same 14% sewer rate increase based on the rates that Jamestown pays the City of High Point for sewer treatment. The rate increase is also taken into account pending capital projects as slated to come due in the next fiscal year and in subsequent years. Investing in our infrastructure to ensure water quality and sewer utilities are available for all citizens is vital to our future. Water and sewer usage fees are projected to bring in approximately $4.6 million in revenues, while additional revenue sources such as connection fees, late fees, and investment income are projected at approximately $281,000. Services and fees include revenues from the golf course operations, planning and development fees, sanitation, and cell tower leases, among others. Golf course rounds played continue to be very strong as have rentals of our recreation fields and picnic shelters. Federal recreation revenues are projected at approximately $1,173,000 for the next fiscal year. The town has experienced favorable returns on our investments over the past year with higher interest rates. However, forecasts are calling for a flattening trend in interest income as rates adjust downward. We are conservatively projecting interest income of approximately $415,000 for all funds in the next fiscal year. Talking about our proposed expenditures, personnel, the category accounts for just over $4 million or approximately 26.7% of the total budget. Supplies and materials, close to 1.4 million, that's 8.6%. This includes supplies that are specific to each department such as fertilizer, office supplies, fuel, equipment, small tools, and other miscellaneous items. Contractual services, just over $4 million, approximately 25.6% of the total budget, including attorney fees, property liability insurance, cleaning and security, system maintenance, other building service contracts, and miscellaneous services. Other operating expenditures, category accounts for just over 1.3 million or 8.1% of the total budget for travel expenses, conferences, educational classes, utilities, dues, advertising, repairs, maintenance, telephone and data fees, and some other miscellaneous fees. In capital outlay, this category accounts for $3.726 million or approximately 22.9% of the total budget. Includes vehicles, equipment, those valued greater than $5,000, buildings improved greater than $20,000, infrastructure valued at greater than $50,000. Recommended capital outlay in this upcoming budget includes a new service vehicle, recreation and golf equipment, repairs to existing infrastructure, as well as water and sewer improvements. Various capital expenditures are also accounted for in the capital project ordinance funds, which are multi-year funds that exist for the life of the project. Some of the current capital project ordinance funds the town has open are sidewalk projects and some recreation projects. Debt payments of approximately $756,000 or 4.6% and transfers to our Capital Reserve Fund, about just over half a million or 3.5% make up the remaining balance of the budget. Now I'll go to a couple of our slides. Maybe? Just to recap, our budgeting process begins in January of each year. The town hosted three separate budget workshops which were open to the public, January 23rd, March 19th, and April 19th. And an additional meeting was held on June 13th at the request of the council. Our first public hearing on the proposed budget was considered on May 21st. The public hearing was continued until tonight's meeting where a final vote will occur for adoption. By law, the budget may change up until the time of adoption. Local government budgeting in North Carolina, as I said before, is governed by the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. We must adopt a new budget annually before July 1st, which is the beginning of our fiscal year. The budget is adopted by ordinance, and the budget ordinance must be balanced. It's not a line item budget, but an overall look at our annual budget, and it is in your packet. For 2425, the budget direction from the town council was to take care of our existing assets first. Our assets are our employees, infrastructure like utility lines, streets, equipment, and buildings and spaces like parks, town hall, the library, et cetera. Our mission statement, as I said before, is to create an exceptional quality of life for all citizens by providing superior services. Staff have been charged with presenting a balanced budget which preserves superior services, maintains assets, and seeks to add additional amenities for our citizens. Preparing a balanced budget which allows for forward progress is an investment in ourselves, our current citizens, our future citizens, and the overall quality of life for all. This is tricky. Well, that's nice. The print-off that I took here is not complete. So forgive me if I look at the screen. The chart that I show you here is showing, it's a little bit difficult to read in person, but about 40% of our current tax rate of 58.5 cents is used towards public safety. Of that, about 24% goes to the fire department and about 15% goes to Guilford County Sheriff's Department. And that's reasonable. I just wanted you to, I wanted folks to understand that only 35.78 cents of our current tax rate is used to provide the rest of the services that we provide to the town. This includes full-time law enforcement, full-time fire protection, weekly solid waste and recycling collection, weekly yard waste, monthly bulk solid waste, our continuous loose leaf collection, which people love, in-season between October and February, a very robust parks and recreation department with a lot of open spaces, sidewalks, and parks for everyone to enjoy, and a well-trained and professional staff, certified planners, professional engineers, finance staff, certified parks and recreation staff, et cetera, to serve our citizens. Here's a couple photographs. I wanted to show you these to let the citizens see because they sometimes don't see these things. Our law enforcement officers, our fire department partners, our own team picking up solid waste and brush, our professional staff that we have here at town hall, and in public services and recreation as well. As well as our public parks and event spaces that we, sidewalks that we've tried to provide and not only maintain but also to grow. There have been some challenges, as I have said at previous meetings. Inflationary pressures have been difficult for us this past year as well. Operation costs, costs for goods and services, labor, construction, et cetera, continue to rise. Duke Energy is going to go up 24% with some additional rate increases over the next few years that they've already identified. Piedmont Natural Gas, up 15%, healthcare costs up 5%, telecommunications up 15%, fuel costs anticipated additional 20% increase, solid waste collection fees are up 10%, tax collection costs are up 13%, insurance and bonding up 20%, our mandatory employer contribution to the state retirement system is up 2%, water and sewer rates are up 10%, and there is an anticipated reduction of our investment revenues, as I said. And now you can't read this from where you are, but this is a chart that shows all of our historic tax rates over the years since incorporation. On the far left in 1948, our tax rate was about 65 cents. It jumped up to about 75 cents in the early 60s and then dropped, as you can see, in pretty significant ways. And those two arrows that are being shown on the, on the screen, the first one on the left starts at 1960, 61, and the one on the right is about 1980. And during that period of time, there's a significant decrease in the tax rate. And that corresponds to the liquor store. So for those who don't know, Jamestown operated an ABC store while High Point was dry. So there was... I didn't ask you who went to the liquor store.
I was a child.
I'm teasing. But during that period of time, the town was able to see significant increases in their tax base and their revenues that were coming into the town. 1977, and I go into this on the next slide. In 1977, High Point ABC Board began, so they began to cut into our profits. And in 1979, they had mixed beverages, as they began mixed beverage sales in High Point. So if you go back to that chart, you see a significant decrease in tax rates up until the time that that begins. And then shortly thereafter, you start to see an uptick. And my point here is that our tax base is what makes our tax rate. If we have a significant investment in generally commercial and industrial properties, you see it, they pay for their way and then some, so it keeps our tax rate lower for citizens. Tax is just a charge of money for public purposes. They are the pooling of resources to help improve our community, to fund our programs and services, and help maintain our infrastructure, as I've said, and then to ensure that we have what we need for the future. Adjusting the tax rate can be viewed as a collective investment in our shared well-being and our long-term prosperity. I think there's a lot of confusion sometimes about fund balance. Fund balance is there to help us fund those capital programs and to offset the need for massive tax fluctuations. So it is important for us to maintain that, and you have a great policy as a council to maintain that at a level that is very comfortable for our future, as our auditor mentioned it when he was here. Just to go back in time a little bit, our initial budget discussion showed a deficit of about $260,000 between anticipated revenues and expenditures. And I said last time, as we view our budget, we need to keep in mind that for each penny of property tax, which is our largest revenue source in the general fund, we only net about $60,000. To balance our budget, at that time, and in April, we were talking about this, we were looking at about a 4.5 cent tax increase exclusive of our capital projects. So the staff recommended a number of budget cuts at our April 19th meeting. Those were two part-time positions in recreation removed, a new budgeting software removed, holiday decorations removed, and Faith made small tweaks to every department to help realign our budget. Then we came to you, and at our April 19th budget workshop, some direction from council at that time was to retain the customer service training, $23,000 expenditure, remove the sheriff's department vehicles for $100,000 total, that's for two vehicles, and then remove $15,000 that we had slated for special events in recreation. That was about $138,000 reduction. At the conclusion of that workshop, it was determined that approximately 5 cents additional tax rate would be needed just to balance the budget. Following our May 21st council meeting and then our subsequent meeting on June 13th, council has requested the additional following cuts. Removal of two music in the park events, a total of $6,000. Removal of the customer service training, at $23,000. Removal of the school of government facilitated retreat to discuss marketing Jamestown for $6,000. Removal of one HVAC replacement in our capital improvements plan for $15,000. Removal of an additional funding to Historic Jamestown Society for $2,000. Removal of funding for the NC Fusion youth sports program at $10,000. And a snowplow, removal of the snowplow for $9,000. Further reducing the budget by $71,000. And this would reduce the tax rate needed to balance the budget by about one penny. That would leave a total of four cents to balance the budget. I just, I did this slide last time as it related to 5 cents, but at 4 cents, the average property, the average property tax value is $239,000 in town. 4 cent property tax increase would result in an increase of $96 per year or just under $8 per month for your average property owner. Our takeaways have not changed. Inflation does affect us all, including the town as we run it as a business. Costs of goods and services do increase. We must be fiscally responsible for our taxpayers, the budget conservatively, and to prepare ourselves for both our current and future challenges. Staff continue to try and maintain aging infrastructure and seek creative avenues to find ways to fund new amenities through grants and other funding sources. And it's impressive to say that over $4.5 million in grant funding has been secured by our staff in the past year and a half. That's incredible. The expenses laid out in this year's budget reflect an investment in our future here in the town. The budget is balanced. All of our anticipated expenditures are balanced against revenues. The general fund has roughly $8.3 million, including capital projects. Water and sewer fund has roughly $8.2 million, including capital projects. And this is putting us in compliance with the general statutes. And following adoption, the budget becomes effective July 1st. I'm happy to answer any questions, or I can defer them to Faith.
Any questions?
You're going to have a public hearing?
We will.
I'll wait till after that if anyone speaks.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak concerning the budget. Please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and return to council. Counsel, any further discussion for the last six months?
Yeah. Well, Matt, would you mind bringing your budget message back up that you read?
I don't have that on screen, but I can talk to you.
Well, I mean, I've got it here, but you've got it, what you read, the budget.
I do, yes ma'am.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, you're fine.
Mine was different, so I want to make sure...
We updated, we updated it slightly since the one I planned.
The citizens' academy is back in because you had to commit to the fellowship.
That's correct.
And the 50th anniversary celebration is back in.
So we will have a small anniversary celebration, but not anything like we had planned, some larger events, that's correct.
We're going to have cake and ice cream.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
There will be cake.
We might even have potato chips.
All right. Okay, well, I was following along, and I said, wait a minute, no, that was there before, but no, so that's good. Thank you for answering that.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Any other discussion?
Well, I was jumping right in, I'll have a moment of silence. Of course, we have worked on this budget. Staff, of course, they always work a lot just to get to where they set a preliminary budget. And then I feel like we've worked on this budget as more than I have on any other that I've been on here. And last year was a tough year, and we had a lot of disagreements. But this year was a tough year, and we've had a lot of disagreements. But, and of course, I would like to have seen the tax rate decreased to 3 cents. We had said that before, but I have witnessed and we have worked. And I felt like we did, we did come up with a savings, but still achieve what needs to be achieved. And I'm all about a compromise. If there is a compromise, I will try to do that. It's not my way or the highway. I do try to compromise. So I'm just going to say I'm willing and I'm comfortable in adopting the budget as presented.
And I'll reiterate, Martha, I'm in agreement with you. I, and again, this... I, and again, this has all been said before, so it's nothing new, but I was really hoping we would get that down to only a three cent increase. I do feel like there were maybe some other things we could have done to get there, but you know, again, in the spirit of compromise, that, you know, I feel like we, we got to where we could get. I, I am still very concerned that it seems that we are really out of line with what other municipalities around us are doing, even though they have the same inflationary pressures we do. So maybe next year, you know, it'll be an opportunity for me to just better educate myself of what do those municipalities have coming to them that we don't, that is requiring us to, to be so, so different. Because we're, we're experiencing about, and don't, please don't quote my math, about a 27% tax increase over two years. So, so I'm just concerned about that. I'm concerned about the affordability of that. So, you know, this was my first round at this, so it was an interesting, interesting process. And like I said, maybe next year it will be a good opportunity for me to even understand more, so.
I think, you know, like Martha, I appreciated everybody who was willing to put some on the table and, you know, certainly there were things that I wished could, could have remained or could have been increased, and I'm sure we all felt that way. But, you know, we are all really trying to hit that lower number. So, you know, I appreciate the staff doing the extra meeting with us as well. You know, we have not added on one before. I, I don't feel like, I think we've typically just gone with the ones that we preset. So I definitely appreciate everybody's time with that. And, and I agree, you know, I think I'm comfortable with the, with the four, given what we took out and what remains in.
And I think that's a really smart thing to have that one more budget retreat once the preliminary has been presented in May and we now have to do the public hearing in June, to have one more public budget. Yeah, I think, I know it's a lot of work, but I think it's beneficial. And you won't have surprises come June, hopefully, but we may still have a surprise. Here we are.
I'm going to say, pretty much with the other council member side, as far as working hard with the staff and council, and I think staff did a phenomenal job and as they always do. This is my first round of this as well. But I'm going to have to say for me, I'm just going to go with not wanting to adopt the, the budget. And this is based simply not on staff, but primarily the tax, recent tax increases that we have been incurred with.
Yeah, I am. Of course, you've heard me preach on it, the same sermon last year, this year. I do worry about the older folks, which are me and my friends, but the people that are on a fixed income. And then people who are single families or single incomes, you know, I do, do very much feel for them. But we do have to, we do have to continue to do business, do have to continue to keep the town moving forward and as we said, taking care of, of, of our assets. So that's why I said in the spirit of compromise, I would, I would be comfortable with adopting the budget.
Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the budget ordinance for the 2024, 2025 fiscal year as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
It's a roll call vote. Katie?
Councilmember Glanville?
Yes.
Councilmember Abern?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And then we've got an update to the strategic plan, Matthew.
Madam Mayor?
CIP?
Yes.
Oh, go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution adopting the CIP for the town of Jamestown.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Katie.
All right. Along with our annual budget, as I mentioned earlier, the town council considers the adoption of their updated strategic plan. This plan serves as a roadmap for the staff to help implement policies that the council have identified as our, as your priorities. It's one of the key plans that we use in the creation of the annual budget. Staff have agreed to update it annually with the adoption of the new fiscal year budget and then make progress reports on the plan at the first budget retreat that the council discusses in the following fiscal year, typically in January. I want to thank all of the staff for their work on the plan, but I do especially thank Anna for, who has taken the lead on facilitating the update of this annual document. That's all I have.
Will we revisit this in January?
Yes.
Like we did last year?
We always do, yes. We, we try to make sure that we do that to make sure that we are keeping abreast of any changes in current policies.
When I was going by, okay.
You're exactly right.
Do I have a motion to approve this strategic plan?
Yeah. I make a motion to move to adopt the updated council strategic plan as proposed. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to new business. Anna, we have a request for a public hearing date.
Staff have prepared updates to the LDO primarily to update Chapter 2.20-2 sidewalks for new development and expansion slash improvement of existing development. The section of the LDO requires sidewalks only one side of new streets and is in disagreement with two other sections of the ordinance that calls for sidewalks on both sides of the public streets. This amendment corrects 2.20-2 to require sidewalks on both sides of new streets. This item was heard by planning board at their June 10 meeting. Additionally, there's a minor correction to increase clarity on the watershed exemption section. Staff recommend setting a public hearing date for the July 16, 2024 regular town council meeting.
Well, I would make a motion to set a public hearing date for the text amendments to the land development ordinance for July 16, town council meeting at 6:00 in the civic center at the town hall.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Rebecca, you have good news.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I would like to ask for your consideration of the award for the shelters at Jamestown Park. We did rebid this project and we got back two proposals. The first was from Cunningham Recreation and their bid came in at $147,732.71. And then Bars Recreation came in at $136,644.27. We would like for you to consider Bars Recreation as the lower, as the lowest responsive responsible bidder for this project and award them the contract.
I had to ask you, this is, this is-
This project, this, both bids came in under-
Under budget, is what I did.
Budget, yes. I believe we had $162,000 for those two shelters.
For that, okay, perfect.
Thank you.
I make a motion to award the contract to Bars Recreation, the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the amount of 1,000, 1,000, that would be nice, wouldn't it? $1,664.27 and allow the finance director and town manager to execute the contract.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You're still with us, Rebecca?
All right. So the Golden Leaf Foundation awarded the town of Jamestown $769,000 for flood mitigation work to be completed in the Forestdale East neighborhood. Staff would request the council approve the acceptance of these funds and allow the town, town manager and finance director to execute the contract.
That is super exciting.
Oh, yeah.
I know everybody in that area is going to be thrilled. And I make a motion to accept the award in the amount of $769,000 and allow the town manager and finance director to execute the contract.
The second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your work-
Yes.
-you received in that grant. Matthew, do you have a manager's report for us?
Well, she stole my thunder. I was going to stand up here and talk about what a great job Rebecca did to get that grant.
Sorry.
But I'll go ahead and do that anyway. She did secure that grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation Board of Directors. That's going to be for stormwater improvements in the Forestdale East neighborhood. The town really wants to thank the Golden Leaf Foundation for the support and that funding assistance to bring relief to the neighborhood. The town has been fortunate to receive some grant funding. I'm going to update you on those major projects. You just talked about a couple of those, which is the shelters and the basketball amenities. The shelters will be moving forward. Basketball amenities, we're going to take a little bit of time to see if we can't find a responsive bidder that's in our price range. So I know Scott has said that he would leave the basketball courts as they are until he gets closer to awarding that because they are still in use.
I know. They were out playing this weekend, it was so hot, I could not believe they were out there playing.
I don't know how you can do it.
I don't either.
But I just wanted you to know that Scott is being cognizant of the fact that people are still using the park and is trying not to take any amenities away until it's absolutely imperative that they move forward. Some of the older playground equipment has been taken out. They're making room for some of the other major demolition efforts, so they did take out some of the older playground equipment. A Main Street waterline replacement, Paul has anticipated that the bid package would be ready by the end of this month, possible bid award in July. They're waiting for those plans to come back from the state with, to meet some of the new language permitting requirements. Proposed RFP will be posted in early July and anticipated a final award at the August 20 council meeting for the actual project. Oakdale sidewalks, Jason has really been working on getting those easements and right away acquired from the different landowners that are up and down Oakdale Road. The final plans have been through DOT comments, they've been completed, they're back at the engineer for final tweaks, very minor. As I said, Penny Road will be advertised in the fall for, it's a request for qualifications for a qualified designer. That'll be a little bit later. The Oakdale Cotton Mill aerial replacement, Paul would like to see an RFP be posted in early July with the hopes again of awarding that at the August council meeting. As you see, the crosswalks at Guilford and Main Street have been completed. Jason got that done and was able to get that done before the end of the fiscal year, which was fantastic.
It looks great.
Yep. The rest of them will be done as we impact them.
Yeah, they look sad now.
Yeah, they do. They look even worse. Yes, they do. Contracts are being finalized and in fact, we just got the notification from the, the folks that are going to be designing the larger sidewalk project on East Main Street down towards the Ragsdale High School campus. The smaller sidewalk projects are awaiting final contract review and signatures and then work will begin on those shortly after that is complete. Our Music in the Park feature, the July 5 day after the holiday, is a special occasion band. So bring out your beach balls and flip flops and watch as the folks stroll up and down our boardwalk. That's the concrete that's adjacent to the stage. That's where everybody dances.
Yeah.
We, all of our information is posted on our Facebook page with the lineup for food and beverage vendors. Again, a special thank you to Jason Pigram, our Assistant Director of Public Services, for doing that rehab work that was on, on those crosswalks. That was great. Rebecca, as I said, was phenomenal in getting us that grant. And it is with great pleasure that I'm able to announce that Faith Wilson, our Finance Director, has completed her certified finance officer credentialing through the NC Government Finance Officers Association. She had to complete all the requirements, I think it's five, five courses or four courses? Five? Five courses, two exams to earn the credential.
Wow.
All of this during a major transition due to the retirement of our previous Finance Director.
A little stressful.
Yeah, a change in our town's auditors, a difficult budget year, as you have said, and a very complicated annual comprehensive finance report process. So thank you very much for continuing to be persistent in that endeavor. The town will celebrate the Independence Holiday on Thursday, July 4. Our town offices will be closed, but there will not be any impact on regular garbage and recycling pickup. That will happen just as normal. Our bulky item pickup, which is normally scheduled for the first Thursday of the month, will be delayed by one week until July 11. And that is going to be in the water bills that go out soon. Then July 16 is our next town council meeting at 6:00 PM here in the civic center.
I just have one quick question, Matthew, for the Oakdale sidewalks. Comments are complete and have been resubmitted to NC DOT for final review and comments. Do you know, how, how long does it normally take to get like-
It takes a while.
It does.
It does take a long time to go through the process. It can take six, eight weeks. It, it just depends on the volume. Paul was like, I don't know.
Okay.
It does take a while.
Now, listen, seriously, if you need some help, I just had a TAC meeting this morning.
I appreciate that.
Because I will talk to Ryan Archer.
I think, I'd like to reserve that for some-
Well, this has been going on, so if there's something really-
There, Jason's now working with the property owners to try and get the easements and, and information signed. There were some things that Beth wanted us to do for the language in the easements. And so we've gotten a little bit more survey work to complete and that's been done. So we're, we're getting that tweaked and he's trying to get signatures now. We have run into-
Please, I would be glad to help. I'm not, you know, saying I can do anything, but I'll be glad to make calls, go visit folks, whatever, moving along.
I appreciate that. We may ask you if, if that's okay, since you've offered.
Yeah, we need to.
There are a couple of challenging issues that we've run into and we can talk about those.
Yeah.
Sure.
Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you very much.
Matthew, council, do we have any committee reports? Martha, I think you have one from this morning.
Yeah. Well, we had a park meeting back on June 12, which I don't usually report much of them because us really is public transportation regional, you know, and we, we don't have a big part in that. But I did thought this was interesting. The Chair of the Piedmont Triad International Airport was there and gave a presentation about updates on the airport. And he did say that passengers are up to double digits over 2023 and this year they should be back to pre-COVID numbers. And most of the flights have returned. And PTI employs roughly 8,600 people and they're the fifth largest employment center in the triad, which I didn't, I just, I guess I never really thought about it. And they have tripled employment in the last 10 years and their average salaries are $85,000 to $93,000 for the 8,600 that they employ directly. They talk about a lot of indirect employment they get from, you know, delivery trucks or these kind of things, but just for that. But also the economic impact, the, the boom supersonic commercial jet building just opened Monday, I think. And then HondaJet, of course, is expanding. Marshall Aerospace is building a new facility is under construction and that's a British company. So it's the first of them, them coming here and they'll fill like 240 jobs, aerospace jobs. So they've got a lot happening out at the airport. And then I did have a TAC meeting this morning and one thing specific to Jamestown, what we were just talking about, the various chimney court and Jamestown Oaks Drive sidewalk project has been moved to the fiscal year 2025. So we need to do it this fiscal year. And there was a lot of talk about, and I'll bring this back more, in August, doing, they do a prioritization of project list. But because of funding, lack of funding, some projects that have been approved and they're committed can at some point be non-committed if they're not done. So I don't want to see that happen to us. It's still unclear, usually the projects that have been on so long have seniority, but if you're not getting them done, something might could happen. So that's why I say I think there's some urgency to do it. And that's all I have.
Yeah, it's just, this was probably the quickest meeting I had ever been to, 15 minutes. Yeah, it was crazy. But anyway, the planning board met on June 10 for organizational meeting and Denise Johnson was voted in as chair and Hoping was voted in as vice chair. And there was an LDO amendment for sidewalk language and an, an adoption of the statement of the consistency. And the next planning board meeting is scheduled for July 8. That's it.
No parks in the free meeting? Well, first I want to see if Martha, next time she's at that, that part of meeting, if you could ask, could they restore the Greensboro to Boston route from triad region?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Not regionally.
Oh.
I really need that route back, so.
Greensboro to Boston?
Greensboro to Boston.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there used to be a direct flight and they got rid of it.
I see, all right.
So yeah, ask, ask them. But we do have some great news for the schools in our area. First, Ragsdale High School will be-
First, Ragsdale High School will be getting a new principal in the fall, Noel Keener. So I'll be very happy to meet her and start working with her, especially since my oldest will be off to Ragsdale in the fall, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And then also, Ragsdale, the spring sports in our area were very successful. Ragsdale High School baseball team were the conference champions. And then at Jamestown Middle School, the golf team, which just returned this year to Jamestown Golf Course for their season, they were undefeated, and they were the district champs.
Wow.
And then the boys and girls track teams were also undefeated and district champs at JMS. So, yeah, we've got some athletes here.
Really, they're good.
Sadly, the JMS baseball team, which my kids, my kids are on, didn't do as well, but...
Well, better luck next year.
Yeah, I had a PTRC meeting, and that was a budget meeting, so basically all we did there. Katie, do we have, anyone signed up for public comment?
Nobody's signed up to speak, but...
Okay, I'm going to allow you to speak, because I told you that earlier in the meeting, but in the future, please sign in with Katie, okay?
On a day at the end of May, I turned on the water tap in our kitchen and filled a test bottle with water which we purchase from the town of Jamestown. I sent the sample to a lab that specializes in testing water for PFAS and PFOs, known as forever chemicals. This is a lab used by science researchers, environmental agencies, universities, and military researchers, and is known for its methods of accuracy, is cited in peer-reviewed publications, and has been funded by the National Institute of Environmental Health Sciences. In other words, their numbers are solid. I did this because the quality of Jamestown's water has become a political issue, and because there is no recent information on the town website about our water quality regarding PFAS, PFOs, and other dangerous contaminants. I also felt it is important, because the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency issued its critical findings this April about the public health risks associated with these forever chemicals, combined with their new limits for their presence in our water systems. Here are the results of our home's water quality. There are 11 PFAS present in our drinking water. Six PFAS and PFOs are in violation of the EPA standards. The PFOs are almost twice the limit. Why am I concerned about the health risks for us if we are drinking water polluted with these forever chemicals? First, it's important to know that these chemicals are not filtered out of our drinking water by the existing water treatment processes. Instead, they remain in the water and get trapped in our bodies. And according to the EPA, they can cause bladder and prostate cancers, breast cancer, pancreatic cancer, liver disease, a decrease in infant birth weights, suppress children's immune systems, leading to a lifetime of health problems. And just as predicted, according to local data that I have researched, we have elevated numbers of cancers, kidney disease and liver disease, and these rates are increasing. We have a public health crisis. And it would be easy to think, oh, there's nothing we in Jamestown can do about it, because we buy our water from High Point, Greensboro, and the Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority. So it's on them, as Mr. Capes suggests. But I believe that's a cop-out. Instead, I propose that Jamestown be proactive on behalf of all of its clients.
Thank you. And please state your name and address for the clerk.
I have sat here this whole evening waiting to give you this proposal, and I would appreciate...
Please give it to the clerk, and she'll be able to distribute it to the council members. Thank you.
Patricia Gray, 105 Bellwood Court, Jamestown.
Thank you. Council, do we have any other business?
I just want to tell you real quick, and y'all may know this, the Jamestown Pid Picking, which is the fundraiser for family services, is going to be September 21. And it's going to be at Furnitureland South again, so if y'all want to get that on your calendar.
Does anybody know when the Lobb's Picking will be?
I don't know.
It's, yeah, October, no, no, October.
Okay, good.
October, yes.
And their last year it doubled up.
That was my concern. Any other business? You have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.